Good evening. Welcome to the Concord Select Board meeting of July 19th, 2021. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the Minuteman Media Network. The Concord Select Board will be meeting live and over Zoom for the next several months in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. We may, from time to time, have select board members join the meeting virtually, and we encourage members of the public to continue to access our meetings via Zoom or in person. Both locations will be posted on our meeting agendas. And at this time, I'm asking everybody who's attending the meeting in person to please switch your cell phones to silent mode. So I'll call this meeting to order, and I have three chairs' remarks. First of all, I want to repeat the message I read last week. We understand that some citizens have recently been unable to access Concord Public Meeting versus Zoom link. My understanding is that the town uses antiviral software called Mimecast. This software screens all links to webpages known as hyperlinks to ensure they are safe to click. So when a member of the public clicks on the Zoom link in an agenda, you may receive a Mimecast error or be asked to register with Mimecast. Our IT department is working to exempt Zoom public meeting links from this Mimecast antiviral software. In the meantime, if you're having a problem accessing any committee meetings by Zoom, please go to the Zoom website, input the meeting ID number and passcode to access the meeting. And I have two other announcements. Next week, I want to let the board know, the 26th, I will be out of town and doing babysitting duties, and I will be in a quiet room on Zoom participating in this meeting. And a brief update, finally, on the town manager evaluation. I have all of your evals and jeans, but there's one of you I'm still missing. We are waiting for the self-eval from the town manager, and the senior staff has received their eval forms, and they've gone out to them, and they're due back on Monday. So I'll be assembling all those three pieces together, and in the near future, we will be looking at a draft summary document. Okay, so today, we are trying our first focused meeting, and that will be our annual goal-setting And I just want to make a few remarks about how we're going to proceed with that. First of all, thanks to everyone, all of you put in very thoughtful comments, and I wanted to include all of them. So the draft is really long, and we're going to try to pare it down tonight. The only thing I took out was if two or more of you had the same comment, I put it in once. But everything else is in there. So now we want to discuss and consolidate. Matt is kind enough to be doing the screen share and editing on the fly, and the goal is going to be tonight to achieve consensus and try to settle all the open issues tonight. If all goes well, we will have a final review next week, just to correct format and typos and adopt the goals. So we're going to go through this document one section at a time. First, we'll see what we can agree on, and before we go to the next section each time, we're going to discuss a little bit about implementation. Is this something that's a multi-year goal? Are there some deadlines? Who's going to be in charge? Is it going to be through the TMO? Is it going to be through a committee? And how can select board assist if that's the case? Okay, so let's start with the values and guiding principles. And basically, what we have here on screen is the document.
Sorry to interrupt.
I had asked anybody participating by Zoom to please mute yourself. Thank you. Okay, so on the values and guiding principles, these are basically the same as last year. We have a couple of little wordsmithing things that were put in. Does anybody have comments, questions about the values and guiding principles?
I think it looks fine the way it is. Thank you.
The comment I had on the public health and safety issue was that rather that we replace the word exemplary with reasonable implementation.
Yes, it's been replaced. It says utilization of best practices for the health and safety of all. It's the second one from the top.
I see that, but I had suggested replacing... Oh, I see, exemplary has been deleted.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes.
I need new eyes.
Me too. I had to go get my glasses. Okay.
I also think that the principles look great.
All right, that was easy. Now, the next one is probably the hardest one, the effective governance. I'm going to suggest that we...
Before we go into... Were we going into beyond goals and objectives? I also had a comment on economic resilience.
Okay.
Where economic resilience... Oh, yes, and reducing obstacles. Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, great. So now I'm going to suggest that this next one, which is really difficult, let's do this one last. It's very long, there's a lot in it. I'd like to maybe split it in two pieces. Let's see if we can get some easier stuff done first. So let's go to financial stability. We have here seven potential goals.
I had one suggestion, which was that the goal that was about the... Or maybe it is already here, the goal about the... Yeah, never mind.
Everybody that said, all of your inputs should be in here, all of it. Now we just have too much. One thing we might do, for example, is number one and two, maybe we can combine them.
I was wondering if we could just eliminate them, because I think both of these really refer to our roles and responsibilities, and they don't have any specific action items. I can't imagine, like, what we will do this year, this fiscal year, specific to these, I mean, other than continue to manage the way we're supposed to manage. But we have that kind of under our, you know, our usual roles and responsibilities. And so this might be a great opportunity to focus our objectives for this coming year, you know.
Right. I definitely agree with you on number two, support management of town services, maintain and bond reading.
I mean, that's a great goal for the town manager.
Right, and his staff, and the finance director, et cetera. But in number one, I think the idea there is the word integrated, that we want to do more, and maybe this is already being done in the capital plan.
Yes.
But, so it might be a duplicate, and we can eliminate it. But what is new here is integrating fiscal policies among the select board, finance committee, and school committee.
Yeah. But it does seem that our action item for this coming year on that front is to adopt the Capital Planning Task Force recommendations and to start to do that plan with working in conjunction with the school committee. So again, I think that there's an opportunity here to cut one and two and to focus on the Capital Planning Task Force for this year.
I tend to agree with that, and, you know, for the last two years, especially number one, we made a point of making, not necessarily calling out the school committee, but talking about an integrated financial strategy for the town and the schools. So I think it's been operationalized in the adoption of the Capital Planning Committee recommendations and the school committee.
Well, what about integrated operations? We were talking about capital is going to be integrated this year.
So what will we do differently?
Yeah, that's the question. That's... Susan?
Well, it's not what the Capital Planning Task Force Recommendation Guidance advises us.
Right, for the capital planning.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that the integration, not just in capital, the capital budgets, but in the operating budgets, is an important concept, and I would like to see a greater emphasis on working together with our board, the school committee, and the finance committee, and in the Capital Planning Task Force, that we really try to work together with them rather than one and then the other and so on. And with regard to the item there, which is to gain special town meeting and town election approval, et cetera, I would like to see that in addition there, which says, subject to the exception, subject to the acceptance of reasonable conditions. Meaning that in order to, that we should ask that there be reasonable conditions accepted before the select board supports the budget for the middle school, including things like limitations on the amount and items of that, issues of that kind.
I mean, the amount is cited in the goal. The amount is cited in the goal, the total project budget of 100 million or less.
Or less. But that's a good...
Also, Henry, does this cover it? Where it says number four, identify specific anticipated school and town strategies for financing the middle school to manage the tax burden.
Yes, yeah, okay. Yes.
I think if we could find a way to put this integration word in one of the other bullets to include the op, include everything and not just capital, then we could... I think we're all agreed on getting rid of number two. We don't need that. That's a staff, mostly, thing. Number one, I think it's just this word integrated that we want to try to...
I just have a question about the integration, because the process is that the finance committee will issue a guideline.
That's true.
Typically, that's, those are the numbers we work with, and the school has a number, and their process and their budgeting is very different from the town side. So I'm not sure beyond that what we would do in terms of integration.
Yeah. Okay, it sounds like we have a consensus then to eliminate number one and two.
Yeah, and I thought it would be good to point out at the outset that, by my count, the first draft had 69 goals, and we have, I think, about 45 weeks and about, I don't know, 32 meetings. So unless we're going to really pump things up, it'll be hard to do 69 goals in a year.
Well, another thing we ought to think about is at least attempting to prioritize them, because you will never be able to accomplish 69 of anything.
Right.
Well, that's what I meant.
So that I think we might spend a little time when we're done, picking out the ones that we think ought to be at the top of the list.
Or just taking them off the list.
Well, then they go, that puts them off the bottom.
Right.
Okay.
You know, there certainly is merit in that. I would suggest, however, that there's also merit in laying out goals that you know you may start this year and not necessarily finish.
Oh, I agree with that. If there's actions.
Because, right, it's because you know there's going to be a multiple-year process required.
I think a goal could be a multi-year goal and also be a high priority goal. So, okay, well, as we go through...
We're down to 67.
Yes. Actually, I know another one we're going to eliminate, because there's a duplicate in here. But anyhow, so as we go through each section then, do people see in these, now we have five financial goals, do certain ones seem like a high priority?
So before we do that, can I just comment on one of the other goals that's in this section? And that's number six, that says work with the town manager to control legal costs. You know, I have, sometimes work with is appropriate, other times work with is a little harder to wrap your arms around in terms of how to proceed. And one way I was thinking about this is, if it's still appropriate for us to have this in here, because we do have access to these issues through the budget process when the town manager presents his budget to us, but one way I was thinking about it was to review with the town manager strategies for risk assessment and legal budget management and expenses.
That's good. It's much more specific than, I think I wrote...
I mean, because it's really his purview in some ways, but we need to be on top of it just because of the public discourse and our concern over the last couple of years.
Right, I think we have multiple points of access when we have decisions that we make about various things, what to spend the money on, and also going to town meeting if we need more money, budgeting appropriately. We have like multiple points in there, and monitoring it during the year too, so.
I agree.
Do you want to read that again, Linda?
Yeah.
If I can, let's see. Review with the town manager strategies for risk assessment and legal budget management and expenses. I can send that to somebody.
Okay, just say, for risk assessment.
And legal budget management and expenses.
Do we want to add anything about obtaining quarterly reports on how we're going? It seems like when we get to the end of the year, we all of a sudden run out. You want to do anything like that?
Maybe you do, at least halfway through.
Halfway through the year, maybe?
And then if that's looking, then we can add the third quarter, unless, I don't know. I bet that might as well do all four, but...
Yeah, the first quarter isn't going to be very worthwhile, yeah.
But I also think there's a difference between goals and objectives and a work plan.
Yeah.
And, you know, implementation plan.
Right.
So I don't, I hope we don't get too caught up in how tonight, and once we have our goals, then we can work out how we can fit them in.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, good. So is everyone happy with that wording?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, what about number seven? Oh, which is now number five.
Five, yeah.
I'm wondering if that's something that the town manager is going to do.
As a matter of course.
Instead of the select board, anyway. This is about the regional dispatch center.
Right.
Isolate and identify revenues or resources.
And expenses such as IT readiness for the town related to the dispatch center. And I agree, it's a part of the dispatch center implementation process.
So I mostly agree with that, that this is under the town manager's purview. However, what I was trying to suggest here is any additional, this is a new regional effort. So are there any pre-development, if you will, or expenses in terms of gearing up our IT or whatever? I can't even imagine all the things that it might be included that are an expense to the town outside of the regional center, you know, acting under its own budget structure.
See, I feel like it makes sense to consolidate the activity related to the dispatch center under regional interests, because I don't think that the financial impact is likely to be something that would affect financial stability, you know, that it's likely to be maybe not incidental, but certainly not a, you know, huge line item in our budget. Hopefully, you know, eventually it should be a line item in the plus column instead of a negative. We'll see for a little bit.
Okay, so you're suggesting, oh, hold on one second. So you're suggesting that we already have an item in the regional...
That's right.
That says implement the regional dispatch center proposal dependent on grant funding, and that we combine that and add in something like identify revenue.
Taking additional revenues, resources, and expenses such as IT into account or something.
So we just move it into that section.
Makes sense.
Okay. Henry?
I was just going to say that I assume as a matter of course, this being a new project, it would be getting regular reports from the town manager on where it was going and what it was costing, and all, and a lot of the details that we might really have legitimate concern about in terms of the implementation, and that should probably be true of any significant project that the town is carrying forward.
Correct. Does that make sense to you, Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, I think we try and, through the town manager's report, provide regular updates on things, and we have milestones or something. We would have an agenda item and bring in the team.
So you see now, the rephrasing, implement the regional dispatch center proposal dependent on grant funding, taking any additional revenues or resources, expenses such as IT readiness into account.
Okay, I have a question, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, go back.
Dependent on grant funding?
Right, because it's...
I mean, it's just, it's, we are going to, we have received grants for it, but it's, I think it's limiting to say dependent on grant funding.
But isn't there a, I mean, we're right now in a process where we've applied for, I thought, the major grant.
We've received some grant funds.
Some, but...
Not enough to do what we need to do.
Right. So that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Just planning funds that we've got.
Yeah, the grants will fund the planning of it, but we will be, it'll be in a municipal assessment going forward, so the operations of it aren't...
Of course.
Right.
But there's still a subsequent grant, though.
To offset that, yes.
Right, this is this year's goal. Once it gets implemented, then it'll be assessed.
I mean, it's just that if the state did not come through with that, we probably wouldn't move ahead, right?
Well, not in, not with the level of scope that we have. And we, to be honest with you, actually, I'm about to forward you the link to the act and post of the board directors meeting. I haven't even talked to the manager of acting yet, so we haven't even decided where we're going next step, so.
Okay. So I would like to add where it says, any additional revenues or resources? I think there might be potential additional costs as well as revenues.
And expenses.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, so we're back.
You know, this, how, I would say that this is very much like the platform of a political party, and, and the attempts that have been made in political parties to require members of the party to support all of the items in their platform have been universal, a universal failure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, anyway, I think we just completed.
Yes, we've actually achieved something here.
And now we have four goals.
Great. Everybody all set then with financial stability? And are there any in particular out of those four that you think are higher priority this year?
I think that the middle school is a very high priority goal this year.
Absolutely.
Which one, number one or number two?
Number one. Number one, number two, I think that those opportunities will show up over the forthcoming years. I don't know that they will be apparent in this coming year.
Well, we have a whole meeting set up just to do that, so...
Right, but I think we, I had proposed a rewording recently about this, which was more like brainstorm town and school strategies, because I think identifying specific anticipated strategies, I don't know that we'll be ready to do that, because...
No, brainstorm is better. I agree.
All four of these seem really very important.
Yeah.
So can I make that change?
Yeah, is anybody object to change that to brainstorming? I agree. I think that's a really high priority, because if we can say to the public, okay, the cost of the school is, let's say, 100 million, and we think we have some offsets to that debt service of, I don't know, 10 million, 20 million, whatever, now you're projected, when you go to the polls to vote for this, your projected, you know, tax increase is a little bit lower because we've identified these things. I think it's real important to give the public an idea of that before they, before we do number one.
And that's what I meant by suitable conditions, not only the price, but also, for instance, the, the commitment on the part of the school committee to declare certain assets as surplus.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Well, they've already said that the land, the land is going to come back to the town where the Pili School is.
Right, so we're not, we're not going to solve this problem right now, but...
Any details, but I don't consider that to be a commitment.
Okay, so we're definitely not going to get into the weeds of any of the details of any of these. We're just going to... What do others think about whether any of these are higher priority than the others?
Well, we have a real, we've made a commitment to implement, we already have the Capital Planning Task Force is something we have made an absolute commitment to follow through on.
Right.
So whether it's the most important thing, it's certainly one that we have to do. So I consider that essential, though the number one is something we cannot avoid, we have to deal with it.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't think the order really matters in this particular section.
No, not the order. We were talking before about trying to identify if something is a higher priority.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I think they all...
These are all good.
We, once we have the goals identified, then look at the whole list.
Exactly. I think I'm going to have to do that. Okay, so, great, let's go to the next section, affordable housing. Now, what I did was, we have one section in the past that included affordable housing and diversity, equity, inclusion. I split it into two sections because it was very long, and, so first of all, is anybody object to splitting this into these two sections? I'm going to assume we're okay with that. Let's look at the affordable housing. And the first thing I want to ask is, in number one, Stephen, this just looked like a complete list to you of the special legislation on housing.
I'm trying to catch up. The version I'm looking at is in a different order.
We can come back to that, I guess. Oh, and also, I want to comment, number three is looking to me like a duplicate with number six.
Yes.
I would take number three out and just say, develop an alternative or successor to Concord's Inclusionary Housing Bylaw.
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Anyone? Okay, John?
All right, other comments in this housing section?
Well, the recognizing, acknowledging that controlling the growth of real estate taxes is an important contributing factor to, in maintaining affordable housing. I mean, that is a fact, I'll acknowledge that, but now we've met that goal. So I, I mean, I just don't know that it's an actionable goal for us that we will...
You said we've met that goal?
Well, in that if, if we're recognizing and acknowledging that's the goal.
Oh.
You know, I just don't know that it's, it's an actionable goal.
Okay, well, I think, I think Linda...
In that there's no specific action identified.
I think Linda is the one, if I'm not mistaken, who put this in.
No, no.
Okay.
I think it was me.
Henry, okay, so what is your idea?
Well, and I think that maybe you just changed the word recognized to make it a, make it a more, make it a more active statement in terms that we will pursue policies that will produce this result.
So how are we going to do that?
Well, one thing is to control expenses. One is to control, including debt, and other factors that impact the tax rate. I also have mentioned in the past, if there's going to be considerable increases in taxes because of certain capital expenditures, that we give serious consideration to the residential exemption. And I know that there are a lot of questions about it, but that's a policy that we ought to examine if we have to deal with keeping taxes manageable, especially for people who have low or value homes.
I think that you might want to look at the meeting last year when the Board of Assessors came to, the assessors came to us, and we had a pretty full discussion on that.
Yeah, and I know the Board of Assessors is not thrilled with it, but there are...
Well, that's not the point, though, but you, I mean, we did have, it was just a year ago.
But maybe it's just... But maybe it's just continue to seek ways in which, is seek alternatives to create a more progressive real estate tax system?
Yeah, that's okay, although I don't like the word progressive.
Okay. Well, it's, it's just a.
Alternatives to the current real estate tax system. I don't know, that's a skate wide problem, so I'm not really sure how much we're gonna get done with that.
Well, like the land transfer tax, for instance, is, is, is something that is a new tax scheme that is a statewide problem that we have thrown at the legislature for, with a home rule petition and so on, as many other towns have. We have, we have a lot of options. And I think that when we looked at this, but we don't wanna get into the details of implementation now, but when we looked at it last year, the reality of the tax cost of the middle school was not so pressing.
I don't know, how about this, homeowners, maybe?
Seek alternatives that reduce the real estate tax burden of less affluent homeowners.
That makes sense.
Everybody okay with that one?
I mean, again, I don't, I don't know specifically what we would do. We would need to have a session or something where we would address.
We're talking about now goals, but I mean, all I'm saying is that when you say, should it be a goal?
It's not just strictly.
Should it be a goal because there's nothing we can do about it? There are things that we can do about it if we choose to.
Right, okay.
All right. Linda, you okay with this?
So I hear the spirit of what's being offered and I certainly think that it's one strategy to try to keep people in their homes, keep affordable homes available in Concord. However, as, as we talk about seeking alternatives and whatever, the first thing that goes out the door is taking on the real task of trying to find legitimate funding sources for affordable housing. And, and we, we have some obligations, as, we will have obligations, depending on when the new census, what the new census status says in terms of continuing to meet some affordable housing goals. That's the subsidized affordable housing goals. I'm also very concerned about the, you know, outside of the subsidized, the, the other range of affordable house, housing.
So Linda, when you say it goes out the door, I know what you're saying, if that was our only goal, but if it's alongside.
We have a very strong bent, not only philosophically, but just in terms of operationally, of letting the market set the rate for housing, right? Putting no, getting a lot of pressure from the business sector and all our economic vitality goals to let developers and, and, and there be no other impediments in terms of, in any way, stopping normal market rate forces. So, you know, it becomes very difficult when you explicitly eliminate specific tools.
But that's my question. If this was the only goal, it would eliminate the other tools. But alongside it, you also have goals one, two, three, and five. So like number two says, submit a warrant appropriation. Number three, you know, house production. So we have, this is one of five goals. It's one tool. But you still feel like it's, it went out the door?
Let me just add a, constructively, a specific additional one that I would add here, which might say, support the planning board's work to identify best zoning practices to encourage prescription of existing smaller homes.
Oh.
Okay, I'm trying to speak to, in the non-subsidized.
A zoning solution is certainly a very powerful one.
Okay.
So support the planning boards.
Support the planning board's work to identify best zoning practices to encourage the preservation of existing smaller homes. And that, in fact, may be identical wording to our goals in the 2030. I can't remember.
Oh, okay. Are we okay with this, everybody? I have a suggestion for item number two, which is just a wording simplification. I would say we can get rid of the following, the recommendations, whatever. I mean, I think when last year, they were sort of more fresh recommendations and now we kinda have this practice.
Yes, yes.
And so I just.
Yes, I agree. I didn't.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps we can go back to number one, Stephen?
Yeah, those are, those are the three that are currently pending. They're, they're approved. Technically, there was Article eighteen, but that was an appropriation to fund the, to fund the exemption this year.
Right.
So do you wanna change it to eighteen?
The State House.
Wait a second, wait a minute, so that, so do we need, that's because we're funding that one because there's a previous one. Oh, okay, that previous one was fifteen.
There was an Article eighteen this year that we took no action on and just wanna be complete.
Which?
Which was the senior means tested exemption. So, but the ones that are kind of still kicking are the fifteen and then the twenty.
Yeah, so I think fifteen's the one.
Twenty-five and twenty-six as well.
All right, good, excellent.
Okay, all right, so I think we're done with another section.
We are, and.
Did we take out number two? I'm sorry.
No, I just simplified the wording, just cut the middle section of the wording.
Stephen, can you see that screen or not really?
Not really. I've been trying to do it here, but I think it's a full zone to try and.
And you can't see on Zoom on there or something?
I could do it on Zoom, it's fine, that's fine.
Yeah. All right.
I assume you'll distribute them after the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Diversity, equity.
Okay, diversity, equity, inclusion, imbalance. Comments on this section?
So I, I'm curious about the first one. You know, there are a number of these that went in the draft that I think of as primarily town manager goals where we are reviewing, you know, we have a role in reviewing what is taking place. Now, we may have additional actions and that's interesting, but I just, I, I think of that as really more the core goal for us.
But if there are recommendations that conceivably.
That we need to do?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I mean, it really is, that effort is an organization, like a department, departmental level. Process, so I, I mean, I, I agree with Matt on this one. I think there are other actions that will be select board.
Right.
The select board have a strong role in, but I think in terms of the work that we're doing with our advisor and then the reports, that's more, much more dealing with personnel.
All right, I think we need to revise number one. Like, for example, next week, we're going to be having DEI on our agenda and we're inviting the League of Women Voters, Core, representatives from several churches, the DEI coordinator from the schools. We're gonna have quite a discussion next week. And what may come out of that, for example, is that we decide, for example, we want a DEI committee in town. So there are many things to discuss and decide that the select board is gonna need to think about.
So isn't that the second sentence of the?
Yeah, we need, that's like the main thing that we need to do, which is figure out what are we gonna do?
Well, if we're gonna do that next week, are we gonna have the consultant's report by then?
We got it, we got it.
Well, that was just the summary.
That, that, it's the summary of interviews. That is, yeah, it, it's a brief summary of the, of interviews.
What was it?
Well, it's part of a larger process.
Fifteen thousand and twelve was the implementation. The total budget was twenty-seven thousand. And we really haven't seen much for that.
Well, it seems like we could split number one into two pieces. We, we have two pieces. One is this main piece that the select board needs to figure out, what is our role? What are we going to do? And then we have another related piece, which is to review the report and see how we can assist and whether there's any action.
I, I would suggest taking the second sentence of the first bullet and making it the second sentence of the second bullet and making that our DEI item. So research and implement diversity, equity, inclusion best practices in town governance and consider potential, I'd say instead of additional DEI actions that the select board should take.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, let's, let's see what that looks like, take out additional. Well, wait a minute, now you took out number one then, so you took out the part about reviewing the.
That was, that remains, the first one remains, right?
Well, if you, if you wish, I.
Well, I don't think we've decided if that remains.
Okay.
Linda and Henry, do you wanna keep number one?
Review.
Review DEI report from consultant.
Well, the town managers just said that it was all at a department level?
Well, I think, first of all, I think the EIA is not just a matter of human relations for employees. I think it's a much broader goal, isn't it?
And I think that that's why the, the number two is much more expansive and it talks about researching and implementing best practices for DEI.
I think we want also with regard to the, you know, the HR part of it, I think we wanna get a better handle on what, what current conditions truly are.
So rather than assist with implementation, do we want to perhaps, um, this is not the word we're gonna use necessarily, but understand some of the implementation priorities?
Yeah, yeah, understand, yeah, hear a report from the town manager and understand, yeah, the implementation priorities. If that makes sense. Susan, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with, with that. I just, I, it's not the time to comment on the report.
No, no, we don't wanna get into the substance of, of any of these. Just wanna make a list. This is our to-do list for the whole year.
The next three years.
Could be. But remember, we had that session a few weeks ago and we were all pleasantly surprised how many we actually got done last year, so.
So review report from the SMT DEI consultant to better understand the town's status and implementation priority.
I'm not sure if it's an SMT.
Well, okay.
And it's not the town's status, it's the town's.
Organizationals? Inclusion status, equity and inclusion status?
I feel like, I mean. The policy angle, the policymaking angle on this is not clear to me. It's not clear.
Yeah, like our, our policymaking role here.
Right.
I mean, what are we doing?
All right, that's a good point. I think what our role is, is to give input to the town manager on many of the things that he's working on. So maybe we wanna review the report and give input to the town manager.
How about to better understand the, the policy implications for the select board?
But there, well, there aren't that many for us. They're mainly policy implementing.
Yeah, that's why I was also interested in hearing the implementation priorities and, and policy implications for the select board, right?
But those, then they've, you can't make, you can't make policy decisions without information.
Right, we're gonna review the report.
And the, even if that falls in the province of the town manager, that, that can feed into the goals and objectives for the town manager that we are going to come up with.
But I, I think in terms of DEI, that's a piece of it, is how the, you know, this process that Stephen has started with SMT, but it's a bigger animal and that's when I'm having trouble trying to figure out what do we do with, with the rest of it? I mean, in terms of how we operate as boards and committees and.
I, I think you're right, like, just very briefly, and then call on Stephen. I think maybe what you just said, Susan, is what Linda said, which is, it would reach something like review report from the DEI consultant to better understand the policy implications and implementation priorities.
Yeah.
It sounds good.
If I may, I mean, there's a look at organizationally, diversity, equity, inclusion as a municipal corporation, as a group of departments. And that's the, the primary focus of my effort now. But then I think there's a larger conversation about community diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And I think that's the conversation, I think we're, I think, it's, it is a journey. And I mean, I think the thing to remember about the report and the conversations and the organizational development ones, which I think are gonna be mirrored in the community, are it is a journey. And so it's not just like, we're gonna do this thing, check the box, we got the report. It's, it's not like they were trying to change, change mindsets, but open up mindsets. And so I think the organizational one is really something that I'm working on with the departments and with our consultants. The community based one, you know, I think is, is what the, the goal number two really captures. And that's, I think, the policymaking leadership role of the select board is really on the broader community. But I do think, I do think, you know, figure, you know, the six of us talking about, you know, how, how do we view what's happening organizationally and are we in the right place? And kind of reporting on that is important as well, but I just wanna be clear about what, what the, cause it can be, we've, it, the conversation of the two things have been co-mingled. I think between the broader community and the organization, I think I'm just trying to separate, they're two separate tasks.
Correct, so I'm glad we have a number one and a number two, they're separate. And I think you just reminded me, and number two, I think we need to add where it says, consider potential DEI actions. I think it should say something like, receive input from many voices in the community and consider.
Well, I was hoping that's what research was, but, okay.
I think it's really important to spell out that we, we don't know the answers. We need to hear from a real diverse group from the community, uh, community.
And even though you state them separately, they are not unrelated.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, listen to voices in the community. How about diverse voices in the community? Is that's gonna be a challenge. The people who really wanna work on this are all saying they're gonna show up next week. What about the people who don't wanna work on this? How are we gonna hear from them? You know, there's a lot of challenges in this.
I think, I think the problem is we don't have a lot of diverse voices.
Well, we'll see.
Also, you know.
And maybe, people may say different things, but.
All right. Now, number three, does not belong here, and I don't know where it belongs. This is about fossil fuel infrastructure. And I was struggling today about we're, we need to do this goal, but I don't know where it fits.
Certainly not in, it's not in DEI.
Right, doesn't fit in DEI. And we also have another one, Article fifty, with one day liquor licenses.
Well, this is where I had thought about putting them all under, along with the affordable housing and senior means tested, all under regional and state interests. Because effectively, they're all legislative monitoring at this point. We've already passed the policies and at this point, it's just bird dogging the things to get approved. So that, that would be my proposal, is to create one omnibus goal, it's the whole pile of special legislation that we're, we're trying to get through.
And put it in the regional section.
Regional.
All right, what do people think about that?
I think that's a nice package because then it's easy to present to our representatives at the State House.
It's easiest for us to track it too. It's all in one. It's easiest for us to track it too, it's all in one place, great.
Okay, I will make those changes.
And D is, I think, ATM 20, Article 50, one day liquor licenses, and then Stephen, maybe you have even some more.
I think that might be at the...
Well, we've got a couple of...
Article 50, Matt.
Okay, I'll get to it in a sec.
We have on two, three, five, six active, there's one from, from the 2018 town meeting about allowing 17-year-olds to vote.
Oh, yeah!
Okay, 2017?
2018.
Okay, and do you remember what article it was?
It was Article 18.
Should have been Article 17.
No, it's ATM 18, okay.
Okay. I'll have to get this specific word.
Right, okay, Jeremy, maybe you can help Matt?
Yeah, that's okay.
And Article 50 is one day, something about the one day liquor licenses, okay, great, okay, so we're making some good progress here, does anyone have any more comments about this?
Let's go back.
Right, this affordable housing, you know, DEI section.
Yeah, yeah, so again, in the spirit of trying to reduce the number of goals, I think that number three, while it's a carry forward from prior years, and I think it's a very important thing for the town, I don't think that we have an action item this year on this front, as a select board.
And their very clear policies have already been stated in those departments.
That's right, I think we should say mission accomplished in some respects on this.
I disagree.
You're talking about number three?
Yes.
Doesn't that, it was going on the list of...
Under regional and state?
Oh, no, 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 he's talking about DEI.
I'm sorry, the numbering has been, okay, let me, here. There we go, it's number four, excuse me.
Okay, the reason I think we should keep this is that we might, we don't know yet, we might hear something at the DEI meeting next week or some other time from the community, and I think we need to...
But isn't that covered by the previous item?
Well, I think this will let for...
DEI best practice is covered by...
I'm not sure, I think I, if I'm the only one who thinks this, we'll take it out, but I'm just sort of imagining that since it's such a national issue, that it might come up here too, and that we want to really support the police for putting in those body cameras, and we want to support our public safety officers for everything they can do to treat everyone with dignity and respect, I don't know.
What are we going to do at a meeting in this coming year?
Right, right.
Maybe we just want to be on record on this issue.
Well, that sounds like where you're at, Terry, but I just don't, you know, we got 67 goals.
I think there's, there are a lot of things that are sort of underlying what we do.
Yeah, we've got values and principles.
Working, you know, yeah, values and principles.
All right, well, I'll go either way, if the majority wants to delete this, I'm okay with that. So...
I also think the next two...
Well, wait a minute, let's just finish this one, so Susan, Linda, and Henry, what do you want to do with this, support the police and fire department? Keep it, reword it, or take it out?
I don't think it hurts to have it there, it's worth saying, even if, even if it doesn't require us necessarily to do anything.
Well, should we move to the values and guiding principles section?
Because when you go up there...
You have, we have public health and safety, but it doesn't...
Instead of just best practices for health and safety, we could add in treat all people with dignity and respect, something like that, Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I do think it's good for the board, I mean, the board has been supportive and been on record as supporting best practices, I just think if you specify it to police and fire, what about every other department, I think you do capture in the values, I think calling out the two departments is, is not necessarily, I think it belies the intent, what you guys are trying to get to.
Yeah, but the nature of the contact that those departments have with members of the public is, I think, very different from the kind of contact that most town employees have.
But I think we have the expectation that everyone is going to
Yes.
treat people with dignity and respect and de-escalate situations, people come in and are upset with all kinds of departments at different times for different reasons.
Lynn, do you have any comment on this? I'm just looking at how we might...
I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm just...
I'm just looking at how we might change the values and guiding principles, I guess I'm partly inclined to keep it here, only because I think we do have segments of our population, of which I am aware, some examples, who feel that our practices could be improved in terms of respect, in terms of interactions and respect, and we may hear from more of those voices as we go forward with some of our DEI.
You know, you're right, I just thought of an example of that, there, yes, you're absolutely right about that.
And I think they do a wonderful job in Maine, but that doesn't mean that there aren't still some sensitivities that maybe we could improve upon.
Okay, so why don't we leave that one for now, and then, Matt, you had some other ones that you were...
Well, I just thought that the, as stated in 2030 envisioned concert, Concord assesses the capacity of town social service programs to meet the needs of town population and identify funding, last year this one was on, I don't recall us doing anything.
No, we didn't, but does that mean we take it off, or we continue to think about it?
You know...
So, the way it's written right now, I agree with you, Matt, but I happened to write down a comment to bring, for discussion this evening, some of you may have not yet had the opportunity to read our own town's social services coordinator's remarks that she made in the most recent Community Chest newsletter, and in there she was asked a number of things that she's working with families on, she works with over 200 families, and, you know, she listed a range of services that she helps connect them with, with other existing nonprofit organizations in town, and then the last question she's asked for the interview purposes in this newsletter is, what are the two top priorities where you see the need, and she said, transportation for residents under 60, on demand, basically, on demand transportation for residents under 60, and affordable housing, so I wrote down a note to myself and said, how do we capture this in our, in our goals? I didn't come up with specific wording, but I...
I think we do have another goal that says, see, you know, transportation opportunities.
It's under economic vitality and speaks to some of this, but not necessarily the on-demand part of it.
Okay, I'm making a note when we get to that part.
Yeah.
We're going to add that in, that's a really good idea.
But, you know, there were over 200 families, there's an example of a group that we're least likely to hear about in this room or on Zoom, from when we talk about DEI and a whole range of other issues that are related to DEI.
Right.
But, you know, there's a whole nother viewpoint in terms of how they view services and...
What they need from...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So, are we going to change it?
Well, you know, you may want to, you know, change it, yeah.
Yeah, let's take it out, what about this, if we take it out here, and we have affordable housing, and we're going to add more about transportation and the economic vitality, we're going to rename that section Economic Vitality and Transportation or something, and we're going to, how does that sound?
So, take it out now?
Take it out for now.
I know I, we were supposed to be done with this, but I'm wondering if we could consolidate two and three by saying, research and implement diversity, equity, inclusion best practices in town government, including police and fire department best practices, then listen to diverse voices in the community, in other words, and then cut number three. I'm just trying to, you know...
That's an idea, Stephen?
I think it's, when you, then when you talk about implementing best practices in the police and fire department, that's, again, I go back to the, you know, is that a policy role, or...
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to just narrow it.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we narrow it to the, only the part about treat all people with dignity and respect, because that's the key to it all.
Well, I have no problem putting that into the principles and values, right, values and principles.
You know, it might belong in quality of life principle, where it says, high level maintenance of town services for Concord citizens, treating one another, treating everyone in town with dignity and respect, something like that. Henry, you're struggling with this.
I'm not struggling with that, I mean, it's so, I think it's a statement that is, on the one hand, so self-evident, that it, it does need to be said, but it doesn't really imply that you're going to actually do anything, and so I think it's kind of...
And that's why the values and guiding principles...
It rings hollow, I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
But I... But it, under values and principles, it kind of fits better, right, because it isn't...
I mean, we're not, we're not writing the Declaration of Independence.
No, not, thank goodness, I think what Henry's getting at, though, is, is there any action the select board can take, like, for example, should, should we maybe hear a report from the police chief and the town manager about training that the police are doing, or, I really don't know.
Maybe we should think about inviting people who are representative of various groups of our residents to come and attend our meetings.
Right, so I've invited a lot of people for next week.
And I don't mean the league of them and voters.
But when Linda was talking, I'm thinking, I need to invite our town social worker to either send in comments or attend, because she would be able to speak for those 200 residents that Linda was talking about.
And maybe bring some of those residents with her.
Well, that's even better if they want to come, that's, you know...
They won't come if we don't invite them. But it's something to think about, that there are some real concrete things that can be done
Right.
that may seem, you know, more of a gesture, but they're more, even a gesture is better than just stating some vague principle that, you know, has no real, you know, has, really doesn't do anything in the real world.
Terry, when we're talking about the capacity of town social service programs to meet the needs, there's some crossover there between how they interface with public safety, and, you know, how that works, because as, we hear about in, you know, often, not in Concord or necessarily in suburban towns, but there are police calls to intervene in situations that are really psychiatric issues or something else, and how does that work?
That's right, and there's plenty of that in Concord, maybe the board really, we need to get more educated about all of that, because we do think, and, right, Concord is a white privilege type of town, right, and we think we don't have problems like, you know, and all that.
I'm going to say to that, I agree there, but...
No, no, but that is perception out there, we don't have domestic violence, we don't have met all the...
We don't have drugs, we haven't...
Right, we don't...
No abuse.
Yeah, and so how does our community deal with that? And that's a really good education that we could learn.
And how do they, because I think there was something you mentioned possibly about the police do have a, someone on their roster of people that they call for issues that aren't, that don't fall in the police...
I believe there's a, I just read about a town, I don't know if it was Brookline, that actually formed a kind of essentially a social work strike force, you know, to deal with those, essentially those issues where you have people where the real problem is not criminality, it's disability, and, and so it's certainly something worth considering that you kind of have, may have that type of resource available, you know, to deal with those, I mean, that's something you can do that may have a practical effect.
Why can reverse them all?
The training piece of the public safety officers would...
Okay, all right, we're getting into weeds on this, but I do want to say...
Actually straying into talking about substance.
Yeah, right.
Which we try to keep away from.
Okay, let me say, I did have a meeting with the police chief last week about a lot of these issues, and maybe it would be good if he came in and educated all of us, we do have quite a bit going on about police training and something similar to Brookline, et cetera, et cetera, and the reason I met with him is because the Mass Select Board Association, we had those webinars, and I was curious, and so rather than getting into all that now, we could schedule that for future, and also, I'm thinking we're going to invite him to the DEI meeting, because I think some of this is going to come up, so why don't we get back to catch up with what Matt has been, Matt has been editing our documents, so Matt, Matt, what have you done here?
Let me tell you what I've proposed, okay, so what I proposed was to take that number three about police and fire, and to, first of all, go back to the values and guiding principles and just say, high level of maintenance of town services for Concord citizens, dignity and respect for all individuals under quality of life.
Okay, everybody okay with that part?
Yeah.
All right.
And then to go into the, sorry, into diversity, equity, and inclusion, and say, you know, research and implement diversity, equity, inclusion best practices in town governments, including police and fire department best practices, and the meeting with the police chief would fit perfectly into that.
Right, right, great.
And then I cut the other...
Okay, and listen to diverse voices in the community, yeah, that's great.
All right, what, Stephen?
I just, it's, it's not the board's role to implement best practices for town departments.
Right, where does it say that?
Well, town governance, which I think maybe that's the term, so...
Governance is one thing, that's, you're talking boards, committees, everything else, but when you mentioned the police and fire department.
I think it's probably up to the board to decide what its role is in these various areas.
Well, the best practices, where, I mean, I was thinking in terms of researching to understand them.
I assume that we're going to get a draft, another draft of this after we have
Correct.
through this, and we will have
One more turn around.
One more iteration of it.
We have a very busy meeting next time, I'd like to get as much done as possible tonight, and ideally, if we could just do the typos and format next time, because otherwise, that's what this, because this is the only agenda item we have tonight, I understand we won't get all the way there, but we could try to get as much of it done as possible.
I guess where I am right now, in terms of my take on this, is that I would eliminate number four for now, I think after we...
Which one's number four?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, here, here I will make it show back up.
Support police and fire.
There.
Yeah.
There it is.
I would eliminate that for now, we've added something to the values, right, after we do our DEI work, there may be
Correct.
items that we specifically identify, and I think at this point to single out these two departments is not where I want to be.
Right, so in number one, Matt has including five and police best practices, so you're saying, take that phrase out and just put research and implement diversity, equity, inclusion, best practices in town government.
I'd be fine with that personally.
And I think that goes to Steven's point pretty well, too. Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, I think we're good on that then.
Okay.
All right.
You know, later we may have specific issues, not, not either with them or with some other department or whatever that we would bring to town managers' attention.
Yeah. All right. So now we have two more goals in this section that don't have to do with DEI. They have to do with this thing called balance or sustainability, or I don't know. And that's support number, number six, that is now number three. Support proactive infrastructure planning.
Right. I didn't think that this made sense. I, I mean, maybe the reexamine the sewer improvement fee would be something that we could do as a board. But otherwise, I don't know what's actionable here for us.
And that's a.
This sounds again, like a town manager.
But that's an.
Role of responsibility even more than just a goal, you know?
It's an economic vitality issue, really, something like that.
Yeah, but what are we going to do?
Okay, let's move it there. And I think we do need to look at the sewer improvement fee. I don't know who put that in there.
Does the board impose that or is that as a public works commission?
Right.
Or is it a bylaw?
I think the Public Works Commission is probably very involved in that, but we, so we could say work with Public Works Commission. But let's put it in economic vitality for now.
Okay.
All right. And then let's go back up there. What else do we have in this one?
The sustainability principles in town decision making. Again, I don't see any specific action here.
That's an environmental goal, isn't it?
Right. Well, I guess it would be under balance or something, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
It's certainly not diversity, equity, et cetera, et cetera.
But it's, well.
Well, it's, isn't that to belong in the values and guiding principles? We have sustainable management of energy resources, reduction of carbon emissions, et cetera.
I think it fits fine there and it's already there. Yeah. So I would cut.
All right. Linda, Henry, you okay with cutting this?
Goodbye.
Linda? Um, yeah. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? That would call it diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging.
Belonging.
Yeah.
That's the new term for this.
It's part of it that I was, I mean, I think it's been shorthanded to DEI, but I know belonging is, it's, you can be included.
Welcoming, same thing.
Well, I think they have it. DEIB is what they.
Okay.
All right. Maintaining Concord's unique character, historic culture, heritage agriculture and natural resources.
So the first one, I, again, I don't, or do we have a plan to build this plan next year? I guess there is going to be, it's the recreation commission is working on this plan. But we're not going to develop the plan.
And isn't the planning department also?
Yeah, there is work going on in the town. We could review the plan.
Well, I have a comment on that.
Propose implementation actions or something.
I think I have a comment on that. You know, how can the select board assist? What's?
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, that's what we need to figure out.
Well, the way we can assist in things like that is to provide resources like support budget items that would help in the implementation or hire staff or pay for studies. So almost any of these things would benefit from our support because everything requires resources.
So maybe instead of develop an integrated plan, because that's what the staff is going to do. We want to support.
Can we support or encourage?
Encourage or support an integrated plan, da, 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 da.
Well, again, there is effort underway now to write this plan. So it seems like within this fiscal year, we will have the opportunity to review and propose implementation actions or, or, and, you know, right?
I don't know what the timetable.
So I just think support doesn't really.
Okay.
It doesn't add up to anything.
Well, what's, what's the timetable on this thing?
As far as I understand it, there's, this draft is going to be completed within this fiscal year, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to.
A new integrated plan? A new integrated plan?
It's an update of the 2014.
Open space plan.
Open space plan, but also recreation. It's open space and recreation plan.
Yeah. So the emphasis there is different, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then I wonder if we.
Yeah, this says.
There isn't work going on to create this plan then. And so that's why I mean, I don't think we have anything to work with here in this next fiscal year.
So, you know, we've said in the past that the board goals are informed by the department goals as well as the select board goals inform the department goals in terms of their priorities. So, you know, there's some interaction there both directions. As I reviewed, and I'm sure you did too, all of the, the goals, action items for the long range planning goals. There is reference to an integrated plan for land management and integrated beyond just recreation and open space. It's talking about meeting needs across all of these areas. And so I think to the extent that occasionally we have some things here that talk about either. And, and I, I understand wherever possible to have something actionable is desirable. But there are times when I think we, we need to be pointing the way or encouraging that that should rise to a higher priority in terms of getting on, on a task. And for me, this particular one sort of, and we've already talked about a couple others that sort of fit in this category of trying to support the departments to be moving on this, so to speak.
Well, I guess I look at the envisioned Concord plan as like that sort of 10 year roadmap that doesn't, you know, document those goals.
Yes.
And that over time, we will get to those. But in a given fiscal year, we'll only be dealing with a subset of them. And I guess my, I, and I get, there is a question of scope of this document, which is, is this the FY22 goals document? Or is this the short and long term as it states in the?
Or short and near term in terms of.
That could be, you know, a multi-year period.
Yeah.
In which case, yeah, it could be more expansive. It's just that I also feel like to the, you start to lose the forest for the trees. That, that's my worry.
So to, I, I hear you. And that's another point of view in terms of how you view this document. Because we've raised as a priority, capital planning, the capital planning process and integrating that. For me to not have an integrated land use planning coming, if not simultaneously, as it won't happen, but at least quickly behind it so that they can be looked at together is probably going to be, give us the best.
I think you're right.
Forward.
I think you're right. And we have another item though, in the section we skipped that we're going to go back to, which is effective governance, item two. It's right in the beginning. It says, continue to support the town manager, town departments and town committees as they implement action steps from the 2030 envisioned Concord comprehensive long range plan. Work with the town manager to lay out a five year plan for implementing the action steps, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. That's not specific though.
No, it's not. So, but I agree with Linda. I'm wondering though, on this one, if we should just change it where it says develop. Let's see, where are we?
It's, it's right now, it had been.
Support. Okay. I think we should say something like encourage development of a multi-year integrated plan, et cetera, et cetera. So this makes clear, this is a multi-year goal. Encourage development of a multi-year integrated plan.
I mean, I most wanted to go more aggressively and just say launch, you know?
Launch, okay. That's even better. That's.
We won't complete it, but what we want to say is by the end of the fiscal year, we've got this process started.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's really almost queuing, it's teeing up a goal for FY23.
Okay, let's do it.
I want you to develop one of them.
Okay. Second one, I don't, again, it, I, I don't know what we're doing on this. We've done some stuff on this in the past, but.
Matt, excuse me. You know, where you say multi-year integrated plan? You really mean an integrated plan for land use?
Integrated planning process.
Yeah.
Okay. For land use.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Comma, land use comma.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, good. Yeah. Number two, maybe it's really part of number one and we don't need it. Does anybody want to keep number two? Going, going on. Okay, we can.
And then this is in progress. I mean, actually, have we done the part that we're going to do? Are we, do we have White Pond and Jarrow coming back to us?
We will, I think. I don't think they're finished yet, you know?
Well, I mean, now they're.
But for the whole select board.
So now they're, now it's the input for what they should look like is we've done that for months. We did for a lot of last year. And so now it's going to get built. I think there'll be a future phase, but I don't.
Right. I don't see anything this fiscal year for us to do on this as a goal. Now, there may end up being things that we have to do, but in terms of setting out a fiscal year goal.
So as they're being built, we don't, we, we could review it, but it's not implementing recommendations because it's already designed.
I mean, there, there are future phases. And so I don't, it, it doesn't hurt to have those, those, we can leave those projects there and tweak the words, but I don't know, maybe just say like, review progress.
Monitor the.
Yeah, monitor progress and, and, you know, you know, evaluate or get updates on future phases or something.
I know. That's, that's my concern, you know?
And I hope, and I hope we do.
Uh-oh, you two are agreeing again. Made your trouble with that.
Well, because, can I, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, I think with stuff like this, these are, when Linda said that the goals of the select board informed the goal, informed the goals of the department and in some ways the work of the departments. Having us on there as something as a goal, you're still interested in White and Jarrow as projects. And so one of the goals is to keep, you know, stay informed and kind of, it's assigned to us that that's something we need to make sure we continue to do. So, you know, I think it's, like you said, monitor or, or, you know, get updates or something like that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Or provide feedback on future phases or something like that.
Because there's, there, we do hear from citizens that they want to know what's going on with these projects.
I just think the way, the way it's worded is for last, it was last year's.
Right.
And, but I think it, honestly, not to overthink it, it could probably stand the way it's written.
All right. Well, I think you've got monitor progress on the long, on recreational use and long-term protection of the White Pond and Jarrow land.
Yep.
And the ecosystems.
I mean, particularly given the public concerns and the.
Yeah.
And the, the environmental challenges. We've had it White Pond as an example.
Definitely.
I mean, I think we need to keep it on.
Right. So number two is.
And there is real action that we can take on that.
Right. So number two is monitor progress.
Okay. I mean.
Can I make one more comment on that?
Sure.
White Ponds, Jarrow and Warner Ponds.
Yeah, I, I agree with that because it's also, it's also mentioned.
Yep.
I, I think we have, we have referred to Jarrow for shorthand as the park. And the Warner Pond, but Warner Pond is a separate distinct project. The dredging is a separate project.
Yep.
Important, important, but it is separate.
Okay, great. Extra and after pond to our editor.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Now, number three. Is this complete appeal? What is this about? Distraining safety. I think this is in the wrong place. System protection. You know what? That comment, is this complete appeal? I wrote that. It doesn't go with this one. It goes with one that came out, which was about Nagog Pond.
So the comment in the parentheses doesn't belong here as well?
Right. Somehow there's something missing. We had one in here before about Nagog Pond. And Mike, and someone suggested deleting that one because it was complete. And so I wrote in parentheses, this is complete. Is there an appeal? Do you know, Steven? Are we, are we finished?
Nagog is complete. That's at the SGC. That's done.
So there's no appeal coming from Littleton or anything?
They can't, not on that, not on the ruling of the, of the rights.
So strike that comment there. That's in Wormwood's and why is that?
Okay.
That's good. Okay. So that's gone. All right. Number three. Ecosystem protection. Uh huh. Bicycles. Okay.
I added this, the second part of that sentence, just because, again, because of the public issues we've had to deal with this year.
Definitely.
And they're continuing, and they're continuing in other places, too.
Deal with that. The second part is the most important part.
Well, in fact, yeah, I would say if anything, cut the first half.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then what are we going to do?
Well, we've kind of given a lot of this to the transportation committee. And then we're going to hear a report from them. And then we're going to have another one of these focused meetings where we figure out what to do. So.
But natural resources is also working with a number of other departments to address some issues.
Right.
With the trails committee and some multiple committees to address some issues. So.
I think it's up to the select board to kind of coordinate all these different groups. Okay. We've got the trails committee, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the natural resources. We're going to have to put them all in the room together and figure out, yeah, coordinate the efforts.
Well, I think some of that coordination effort is up to the departments.
Right. We want the departments.
A lot of it is.
Steven, you went, that's a suggestion the other day, to convene all the departments together to come up with a plan first.
Yeah, I think what I was going to suggest here was, does the board have a goal for, you know, trails and, you know, the use of trails and pedestrian access and, you know, how, is it a goal to ensure that our, our trail network is, you know, accommodates both pedestrians and cyclists or, you know?
Yeah, I feel like that, by the way, would be a more positive way of.
Yeah. And then, and then that just applies and that, that's the sign to us to say, we have a goal of making these more accessible. Yeah. And so it's not about coordinating bodies. It's just whoever's working on it, this is our goal for our trails, is I guess how.
I think that's the intent here.
Yeah. So I think, I think our goals are access and safety for.
Well, it should also be to, to preserve the natural, the natural resources.
Right.
Because that's, the key to having those trails is that they remain as close to natural state as possible.
Right. So we, our goal is to figure out the right balance, I think, between preserving the natural resources access and access of different groups and their safety. Balance all of that.
Yep. That's easy.
Good. I'll, I'll remind you, you said that. By the way, I'm thinking this might be one of our easiest focused meetings because all we're doing is making it to do list. We're not solving these problems tonight.
I thought citing complete streets might be useful just in that that is town policy at this point.
Yeah.
So...
So instead of coordinating the efforts of town bodies, it's almost like, find, find the balance between, you know, the mutual, the different goals of safety, access, and managing natural resources.
Yeah.
But finding a balance.
Yeah, I don't know.
How do you do that, by coordinating town bodies?
Yeah, that we can...
I would say strike that, just start with support to complete streets goals of enhancing pedestrian safety, managing increased use.
But we've gotta do something, support.
Promote.
Promote, well, by communicating, by outback communications?
Well, we're going to have a, yeah, I guess there is some coordination, because we want to take the recommendations from the Transportation Committee. We're giving them a few months to figure out how bigs to get, then they're gonna come in here, and we're gonna have a focused meeting on all of this.
For me, the essence of what we were trying to accomplish in this previously was the, yes, supporting the complete street goals of enhancing pedestrian safety and managing increased use of bikes, and other non-automobile motor vehicles, while protecting our parks and natural resources.
Correct, and ecosystems.
Correct. You know, natural resource trails, or whatever else we need to say there. While protecting our, our natural conservation areas and trails.
Okay. Go ahead.
I agree with Linda, instead of to protect, it should be while protecting. So you've got all these different things we're balancing here.
Okay.
All right. Okay, good.
The next one?
The next one.
I know that we did get some citizen correspondence on this issue.
We did, so my suggestion here is that we keep it with this tweak, where it will say, continue to seek resolution for public access to the path through Esteban Woods.
Or Esteban Trail.
Yeah, either way. Any, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Seek resolution, you can't argue with that, can you?
No.
All right.
Okay, launch town, okay, any other comments on this section? All right, we're on to economic vitality, and maybe it's gonna be named Economic Vitality in Transportation, let's see, we have nine things in here, plus, we're gonna...
Why don't we start with number nine?
Number nine?
Number, yeah, number nine, Henry, you'll put in, work to ensure that the post office remains in its present location. Okay, we want it, inquiring minds want to know, what's this about?
Well, I think that, I've felt for a long time that kind of the, it, it happens to be the anchor of the commercial center of Concord, and so, if, and to the extent that we have any control of what the Post Office Department does, it's an important, it's important that we keep it there. It used to be the place where you'd go to campaign for political office, it's a place that still is a very, it's a kind of a draw to people, that's something that's open, that people come to, and so it's, I think it's a key resource, just being there and being something that draws people to the center of Concord.
And is there a danger, a suggestion they might leave?
It's always a possibility, and it's always something we have to be on, you know, on guard about, and we should stay informed about it, just for the reasons I stated, it's...
I mean, wouldn't we, we could just easily say, work to ensure that First Parish Church remains in its present location, I mean, I, I don't know why we're calling out the post office.
I don't think we're, I don't think we need to have concern about the First Parish Church, it's been there for a long time.
Okay, why are you concerned? Why are you concerned about?
Because of the status of the post office and the fact that they make decisions, you know, in Washington that affect in local areas, because of broader corporate policies, without any real regard for the impact it has on the local communities, and so...
So I think, I think it is, you know, it does have significance in terms of being a, a community place where people run into each other, and, you know, are good neighbors and so forth. I think this board has, and previous boards as well, when, when there are legislative issues or there are, we find out that something's threatened that is valuable to the town, and we consider valuable to the town and community, I mean, I think we go into action in terms of letters of support and trying to, you know, do all that we can to mobilize others for support when we feel it's important to the town, and for me, this sort of fits in that category, and we don't need to call it out right now as a specific...
Well, you know, as Thomas Jefferson didn't say, eternal vigilance, and I think, I think we have to...
I don't disagree with that in terms of, you know...
So, so I think that it's, I think that ought to always be somewhere on, you know...
On our radar, and I think you've put it there, I think you've put it there.
And that, which, and I think that, by the way, with regard to the remark I made about political platforms, what I always found was the real value in them was the discussion that went on in order to arrive at them, and that's, and I think that's what we're doing now.
That's right.
Yeah, so I think it's important, and if you don't want to put it on the list, that's okay, but I, I think I want to make the point that it's a, it's a valuable resource to the town that is frequently taken for granted.
Well, can we add it maybe to number six to consolidate, where it says, continue to work with the business sector to establish retail diversity support systems, including intra and inter-town transportation, and the present location of the post office.
That doesn't sound like it's been said.
You know, well, what do you...
We should always have our antenna out on many, many issues.
The object, the object is not to merely reduce the number of, number of paragraphs.
Right, okay.
So, if it's worth...
You know, and I say, as I say, I agree with you, I think it's an important fixture in terms of our town, and I, I think people would mobilize to try to keep a post office in Concord Center. Trouble with putting something like this, however, is that if we, if there is no known real present danger, it sends a message to the community that, yeah, that isn't accurate.
That was my, it, you know, I'm pretty, it's like, did anyone know something I don't know?
There were several of us who said, oh, is there something we don't know?
But some, but that is a message that will not have any negative effect, and I think that by the time...
No, it will, we'll have to answer questions, it could raise red flag that isn't there.
No, I mean, I think, you know, there are some things that when you raise a question about them, it, it creates doubt or fear, this is something that, you know, that we just want to be aware of, and I think it's, and it's also something where it has, a process that is so Byzantine and so remote, that I think we really need to have a certain level of being proactive about it, because by the time you find out that they've decided to move, it's gonna be too late.
How are you proactive about keeping the post office?
Well, you might be talking to our, to our members of Congress about it, because, I mean, those are the people who are most likely to have, you know, Laurie Trahan and Elizabeth Warren should be probably, it wouldn't be hurt, hurt to be in touch with them about putting it on their radar and letting them know that we have a concern, and those are just things that come to mind, that's, that's, I think, where you have to start to operate at whatever contacts we have with the federal government. I think it's worth putting on their radar, just as I think, I've been working on putting on the radar, the acquisition of the Concord Armory, which is just a long, and...
Okay.
You know, that kind of process where you have to be ready to, you're ready to react.
Shouldn't the Concord Armory be on this list, if that's more, if that's kind of further down the road in terms of process, I'm just...
Yeah, it should, actually, it should, I've been working on it for years.
Well, but we're, also, this is a guidepost, guideline for this year, for the year coming.
And actually, that issue may come up this year, because the, the National Guard is coming up with a new resources plan in January.
All right, how about this? How about, Henry, can you work between now and next week, wordsmith this number nine, to include the armory, and let's take another look at it next week? Because we don't, we don't quite have consent, so let's look at the rest of this, you need a pen?
No, I have two in my pocket.
So, Linda, about, it would've been two years, yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I think it was, just as a FYI here, two years ago, Mike, Lawson and myself met with Senator Barrett regarding surplus that might include the armory, and, you know, some of these conversations, whether it's this or something else, some of them are sort of informal and offline, some of them are, you know, you get definitive responses about, you know, at this time, it's not viable, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so, you know, there are a lot of things we're talking to, either the town manager, or in this case, over the last year, myself and the town manager spoke to various legislative representatives about various topics, not all of which, you know...
Come to fruition.
Right, right. Either come to fruition, or, you know, are tangible enough that we can put them here.
Right, so...
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Because I, I, I think the point that's being made is, is good, and I think what, if I'm, what I hear saying, I mean, we did reach out to the armory, they told us flat no that they were not interested in disposing of it to the town, but that's, I think the bigger point is monitoring any changes in institutional, you know, institutional properties. MCI Concord, I mean, we've got a lot of them.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Middlesex School, I mean, we've got a lot of institutional property owners, and so we really want to monitor the, you know, for any changes to those, and I would count the post office, and that, sure.
Okay.
I mean, not just because Henry's picture for hanging there for a long time.
All right, so Henry and Stephen, if you could work together on including, making this a little more general, and we'll look at it again next week, so, I also want...
But, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's really good, I think it's just gonna...
We haven't really talked about, like, monitoring, like, changes in institutions, that's a good one.
Okay, now, another one that we're gonna add is, there are two in that long governance section. One says, address issues with town broadband, see economic vitality section. Well, we already have a broadband issue right here, number eight, so that's already there, but I'm gonna propose that we move another one from governance also, number thirteen, it says, remove, review the town's wireless communication policies.
So, could I just propose, like, a working draft wording, or the item we just were talking about with Stephen's input, which I thought was good input? Monitor potential changes in status or ownership of critical economic vitality resources, such as the post office and the armory.
I would say referring more to institutional, institutional property owners.
Okay.
I'm happy with that, so I don't have to do a...
Yeah, that's, that's good, we'll get it done right now.
Yeah, so it's done.
Institutional properties, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Great, so everybody okay with that? It says, monitor potential changes in status or ownership of institutional properties, such as the post office and the armory.
Good, yeah, so it's good.
Okay, so getting back to what I was saying, if you go up to governance, we have...
Get rid of this.
We have sixteen things in there, yeah, number thirteen, I'm gonna propose that we put in the economic vitality, and number fourteen, we can delete completely, because it's already in economic vitality.
Just a second. It's funny, though, the, the wording of it cites public safety.
Okay, so let's see the wording, maybe, right?
Sorry, trying to find economic vitality again, okay.
There it is, so what would be, I guess, number eleven? Not that these are in any order.
Yeah, and I also thought, we didn't quite get through number ten, trying to, and I'll fix the...
Okay, so the question is, this thing that says sixteen here, does this belong in economic vitality? Review the town's wireless communication policies and provide a definitive plan for addressing the priority safety concern of town center cell phone coverage. So it should be safety and access concerns, because the business community's talking about access.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
When you say review the town's wireless communication policies, I mean, we have...
Do we have one?
I think we have some, but I think what you, I mean, if what we're saying is, we want better cell service downtown, or seat, you know, either construct or seat of the construction of a cell tower that improves service downtown, that's one thing, if we're just looking at, like, amending, like, a five, like, implementing like a 5G policy or something like that, that's different than basically solving...
We have several different items in here, yeah, they all need to get done.
Yeah.
And, so the first question is, does it, does this whole thing belong in the economic vitality section? I think you're right, it's 5G we have to look at, we have to look at a cell tower, there's no coverage in the middle of town.
I, I think it's appropriate in economic vitality, for whatever that's worth.
The cell phone coverage.
Yeah, it is a safety issue, but it's also an economic vitality issue.
Yeah, I think now, just adding the end access concerns, I think that builds...
All right, so does this cover both of those issues now, the 5G and the town center cellphone?
And the broadband, right?
Broadband is already in there.
Yeah, we have, we haven't gone through all of these.
No, we haven't, it's already in there, and another one.
No, in fact, we've left right down to the, toward the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Go down a little bit, I think maybe number nine is, oh, there it is, number eight, work with the town manager on initiatives to ensure the stability, continuity, and continued growth of town, of Concord's municipal broadband internet service.
Excellent.
Right, and meanwhile, in the governance, though, you would have the seat of committee, right?
Right.
Go.
Right, we're gonna have to go back to governance.
For that.
Okay, number seven, I have a question. This, I think, is about Junction Village.
Yes.
And someone wrote, status of this, and someone wrote, confirm this is done with specific outcome report. So, Stephen, where are we on this whole number seven with this junction?
Can we get rid of it, or do we...
Yeah, are we still working on, on all these?
No, all that stuff is done, I think he's waiting on his tax credits, and, and, I think it's in the final stage of permitting. I think, I think the request is just, maybe have it as an agenda item for an update, and we can have, we can invite Walter back, or we can have Marsha or Liz Russ.
I mean, basically, this is last year's goal.
All that stuff, all that stuff got done.
Won't it just come as part of the housing production plan update?
No.
No?
Not necessarily, so I, I think Stephen's idea about having an update would take care of it.
Okay, so does it belong in this section, or the affordable housing section?
I think we struck altogether.
I, I think it should go in affordable housing if it's going in.
Because that's what his purpose is, isn't it, is to meet the affordable housing.
All right.
Well, those two, those two components were specifically, yes, it came along with the affordable housing.
Yeah, I don't think you need to...
But those two specifics added to the economic vitality of our town in terms of tax revenue and, and job opportunities, so that's why that was under that section.
Okay.
But I mean, I, I, we'll just, we'll just make a note to give an update.
I'm not sure we need to have a whole goal for it.
Doesn't need to be a goal, yeah, I wouldn't say so.
Okay, then I won't add it, all right, back to economic vitality, just looking at a number two... Just looking at a number two, what, what is this about? What are we doing?
Support the new municipal economic development department. Oh, this is really out of date.
Well, it's the economic vitality division, and it's what it's gonna be, something we're gonna talk about next week.
Is there some, something we should be doing?
Well, actually, next week, we have to hear the whole plan and vote or not vote for the reorganization that is needed.
Yeah, so under the charter, if, if we're, if the town manager proposes a significant change to the organizational structure, requires select board approval, even though I think this, this is all kind of within general government, I think it's a significant enough change where I would want to bring it and present it to the board for review and consideration. I think it was in the, if you remember the budget presentation for FY22, we had a slide about moving the funds over for the budget. Now this is just making the structural change. So the economic development, the economic vitality division would be part, would be proposed to be part of the division of landing, the Department of Landing and Planning and Land Management.
Is that coming up next week?
Yep.
Well, it would be really helpful if, since that, because that seems to me that's a rather deep subject that it would be a good idea if we could have those materials well in advance of Friday.
That's a good idea.
So I don't want to see these things like at, you know, eight o'clock on Friday evening and then have to deal with them in time for a meeting.
Could we say review and decide whether to implement?
That sounds good.
Consider.
Consider the establishment?
Okay, the establishment of, what was it? Economic vitality division. Everybody okay with that one?
You gotta change development to vitality, thanks.
All right. Okay. Other comments?
The very first one, I mean, I guess this just sort of, we will do that in the course of our, right?
Yeah, we promote things like porch fest and.
Right, so.
I think that's an important role for us to be.
I see it as a role, but I don't know.
It's not, you know, the most time consuming thing, but it's important for us to advertise these events.
Okay.
Okay. Other comments in this section? I guess for number five and six, I'm wondering how the select.
I think that they're overlapping.
Yeah, I think they are.
And we also are gonna try to capture the.
Right.
On-demand transportation for, particularly for residents under age sixty.
Right.
Well, if we had effective, regular transportation, like bus routes that were continuing, we really wouldn't need on-demand transportation.
Well, I don't think this even says on-demand.
No, we're gonna have that now. We agreed before. Linda, do you have some good wording? And do you think it belongs in part of number five or its own bullet or?
Well, Matt was suggesting these probably overlap and need to be rewritten. You know, the two need to be.
Well, number six, we could probably strike, right?
I think, I mean, basically, in transportation throughout town, to meet the needs of, you know, to support economic, social, and I don't know, recreational needs, right?
Well, we don't even have to say that. I think we can just put identify and implement opportunities for enhancing transportation.
Yeah, we don't care where they're going in the bus.
Yeah, they might go into a doctor, or yeah, they might go to the grocery store.
I just wanted to make sure we captured Linda, that Linda's angle.
Well, Linda, you're talking about people under sixty because they don't have the COA ban, right?
Correct, yeah.
You know, and we can add, include on-demand transportation.
It could include getting to the grocery store, the, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's add that on-demand transportation.
Okay.
So I think the title of this section should be economic vitality and.
And connectivity.
Well, or and transportation. Which, which one do you guys like better? I think transportation is something that people would understand more than in the planning world maybe.
All right.
Okay.
Isn't there, there is, there are some efforts in that area. I'm not, I shouldn't.
Yes.
That grant for.
But I think we need to really encourage and.
Yeah, grow it.
Yeah, grow is a good word.
And you're gonna really, then you call it transportation and communication.
Well.
We've got the broadband.
We have broadband in there, number.
No, but we, in the title of the section, I got transportation and communication.
Okay.
Then we've got it all covered. You're all.
Okay. This number eight down here, corrective in, infrastructure planning. Do, what do you, I mean, the first sentence there, I don't, like, again, I keep thinking of that as a town manager thing. I don't know what there is for us to do there. I mean, clearly, we're always keeping an eye out, but.
So do we want to just put, work with the CPW Commission to reexamine the sewer improvement fee? We want to take all that out?
I'd be go, I mean, that's the real issue that we.
Well, except for the parking. I, I.
Oh, right. Is parking in there as well?
Yeah.
Guess I think, well, those are two, those two things need to stay. Concern with parking and sewer, sewer improvement fee, both as they impact the, the economic environment.
Can I suggest on this one? Because there's already kind of an, an effort with the Economic Vitality Committee going with looking at the barriers to business. I think the sewer improvement fee and parking were two of the ones that were specifically, like, within that, that task, that assignment.
Okay.
And so maybe support the Economic Vitality Committee on the.
Their efforts to do these things.
Yeah.
Well, good. That's even better. Yeah.
Which number is that?
Eight. Oh, the old number was.
Under economic vitality or was it under?
Oh, it was under a different place.
Yeah, we moved it.
We moved it.
From effective governance?
No. How about? I think it's unique character historic.
It was under, it was under diversity equity inclusion in ballot.
Oh, yeah, no wonder we can't find it.
Okay, so.
Well, we're making a lot of really good progress here.
We need wayfinding just for those documents.
You should've seen it before. Woo.
Okay.
I really want to thank Matt. He helped me. I had all, I sent him a document with green, red, bold, and every other thing.
So number five, I'm losing steam here to help you with this. But number five needs a little more work.
Okay. Identify and implement opportunities for enhancing transportation throughout town to support economic, social, and recreational needs such as increased use of shuttle buses, school buses, on-demand transportation, rail trail.
Social, you know, in, what's bothering me about it, I guess, is the support economic, social, and recreational needs. That phrase could be read in different ways.
So, so, social equity and recreational?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
All right.
All right. Okay. It's a pretty long sentence.
It is, but it, it parses.
All right. Well, as far as wordsmithing, we'll have a chance on that. You know, everybody will have a chance to review it.
Instead of such as, would it be with potential increase, with potential increased use of da-da-da, da-da-da-da?
Well, how about encourage increase? I mean, we want to sort of drive this transportation.
Or such as with, I, I don't know. There's something that needs to be changed.
All right. After recreational needs, how about a period? It's too long.
And it just, we can just say increased use.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Great.
That's better. Thank you.
Much better.
No problem.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this section? Okay, we have one more easy section, and then one more section that was hard that I think isn't gonna be too hard now because we made it easier. So regional and state interests, comments, oops, we have two, bah.
So we, yeah, we moved in all legislation into item one.
Okay.
Okay, and then invite the state legislators to meet with the board.
Oh, okay, this next one I have some questions.
It's redundant to work with them with this because clearly we now have that.
Good. All right, number three, I have some questions. What, why is mass DOT in here?
Also, why is this a goal? Of course, we do this as a matter.
Because we have liaisons. Linda's liaison for hats. Susan, I think, is liaison for.
Right, so we always do this every year. So why is it a goal? We don't say goal, be a liaison to the planning board.
Yeah, I think the main reason was some of these have gotten lost over the years, and then the commit, you know, for example, HFAC and, and the MBTA were after us to get representatives. We hadn't had people there for a couple of years.
Reinvigorate our participation in regional organizations.
There you go.
What about, um, because I think six, a lot of these committees relate to Hanscom.
Yeah, it's a duplication.
So could you say maintain active memberships in, or maintain active participation in?
Well, okay, you don't think reinvigorate participation is a little more?
Some of them we are, some we're not. So I think it's just, it doesn't matter. I just think that a lot of these are, well, Hanscom, I suppose the base itself is a different thing.
Yeah, we can take out number six then, if we already have this stuff in number three.
Yeah.
Well, I could just add Hanscom Air Force Base to the list up above.
It's already in HF.
HFAC.
But that's different, well, yeah, in terms of.
Maybe we should spell these all out in the, in the final document. Like, for example, why is mass DOT on there? We don't work with them. The Public Works Director and the Town Manager work. I'm not sure who put in mass DOT.
I think, yeah, the departments work with mass DOT.
And what's BRSB?
Right, what is that? So let's take out MDOT. Oh, whoops. And who, does anyone know what BRSB is?
Boston Regional Something?
Is this supposed to be Bruce Freeman Real? No.
No.
Let's, if no one knows what it is, it's coming out.
Yeah.
They have a question mark up there.
Because I put the question mark. I'm like, what the heck is this?
All right, Google it.
Um, so Matt, where you have hats in parentheses, that's supposed to be HF, you have hats in HFAC reversed. It's HFAC, I think that's.
No, I've got Hanscom Area Town Selectment hats. Then, then we would need to spell out whatever HFAC is.
Oh, I see.
Field Advisor Committee.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Okay. All right. Okay. Can we do this offline? We.
Yeah, sure.
All right. All right, great. Okay, anybody else have items on this one? Okay, um, now we're gonna go through the COVID section, which Matt suggested go last this year. And I think that was a good suggestion because we're coming out of COVID. I will say that there was a lot of consensus so far, but on this item, this section, there's not agreement at all among board members.
Do I, do I have a question about the, this number six here, MMA Fiscal Policy Committee, can we throw that into the previous?
Yes. So in the COVID section, um, basically, the problem was we don't know what's gonna happen with COVID. Maybe we'll come out of it and we're basically done. Maybe the Delta variant's gonna cause more trouble. And so because we don't know what's gonna happen, we're divided on how to proceed. So we were all over the map on this one.
I think almost all of these are town manager actions. I don't think very many of these are ours.
All right, let's see. Number one, prioritize public health and public safety. That may require some announcements by the board, but, you know, basically, that's it. We just announce it, yes. Okay, number two, yeah, that's.
I think number eight is ours. I think virtually everything else is not.
Okay, let's look at each one. So number two, does anybody think that the board is going to be looking at the state and federal regulations? No, number two is out. Number.
Is it not already out?
Not sure yet. Number two is out. Number three, support the Economic Vitality Committee to find creative ways. Is that something the select board is doing?
We just said that.
I think we've basically done that, and they've moved on to looking at other barriers. Isn't that?
Yes. Now, now is the next thing is the barriers.
Yeah.
Discussion.
COVID reappears.
You know.
I would.
But it doesn't come under the economic vitality division now?
It would if, if it exists, or it's gonna exist. It's just where is it gonna exist?
All right. So do we need number two?
No.
Okay. Um, numbers, take on necessary means to the open town offices. Um, I think that what we want to do on this one is we want to hear a report from the town manager and, and let the public know, you know, an update on, on the reopening of all town offices.
I think we want to express a very strong sentiment in favor of getting town offices and town facilities fully open and staffed as soon as possible.
And that's what we heard the report on a few weeks ago, right? The plan for that.
Right.
Yeah, the only one, the only thing that's behind now is townhouse because of renovations.
And that domino effect.
Yeah, and there's a couple of, like the assessor and others that are impacted by that. But once that, once the renovations are done and we're moved back in, then it will be.
Well, it's over that it will be to the new plan, which is limited open to the public hours, right? Which is a ongoing thing, not a post-COVID thing.
Correct.
Well, some of it is post-COVID because it has to do with employees having different hours.
Yeah.
So I think we need to receive regular reports from the town manager on how, how these offices are opening and how we're coming out of COVID.
And I think we need to do more than hear a report because I think, at least I have a really feel very strongly that we should push as hard as we can to reopen the town as, as quickly as, as we possibly can. And I would even put a date on it. Everything is subject to a recurrence of the, of the, you know, of the plague. But it'll be a different situation anyway, and we will have to, we'll have to deal with that anyway. But in the meantime, since it looks like the direction things are going, and if we wanna, I, I would want to see everything open up as quick as we can get it.
I'm confused as to what that means.
Matter of listening to a plan, it should be a matter of our, if we agree on, if you agree with me that we express our preference of that, what happens.
But I guess we heard a plan a few weeks ago, and then that plan has been implemented. So, other than the townhouses we just heard, so.
But you can access public.
But even the question of, of, of having just limited hours, I don't, I'm not sure that's something I.
Well, I guess that wasn't presented to us as a. Well, I guess that wasn't presented to us as a.
It's a long-term staffing preference.
Okay, I, I agree with Henry. Like, like another example is the library. Will it open on Saturday and Sunday? We don't, we don't know. Is there a plan? Or, anyway, so.
Well, I guess I'd say, what's the policy role on, on this?
Right, well, I think we'd like to hear the plan and let the citizens know what is happening.
And, and I think we, I think in terms of your point of updating where things are, and once the town, and as I told you today, the townhouse should be reopening, I would say, you know, maybe a month or so. It's getting, it's really close. And so once that reopens, I think that'd be a good time for a check-in on where things are. And, because we'll have to do some offices that were in certain locations in the townhouse may end up in different locations. So I want to let people know that there are different locations. But that's, there's still some work to be done to finalize all of that, but that'll be a good time to kind of update all that.
And then after that, it might be a couple more months. It might be something else happens, another update. I don't know.
And the library thing maybe, you know, it's, we've had some, yeah, we've been working with the corporation and when the, when the new addition opens, that'll be a time to revisit.
Okay.
Saturday, Sunday hours.
So how, yeah.
But if things are going to be opening up in different places, I think we want to know where they are and we may, and we may not like it where these things are going to be. And I think that we ought to have some voice in that before those decisions become irreversible.
That's a good point. So get regular updates and give input. Okay. Anybody else comment on that? Okay, um, number three, I don't know if the select board, we're not monitoring changes.
No.
No.
So that's out. Implement hybrid committee meeting format. Okay, I think we have a role in this. I have a lot to do with the upcoming chairs breakfast. To be, we had a lot of things come up this last two weeks about Zoom bombing and web formats. And so I think this needs to stay on. We need to hear what the other chairs are doing and communicate with them. So I'd, I'd like to keep this one on. Maybe it needs to be reworded.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I mean, the implementation of the committee meeting format is being done by town staff.
Correct.
Right.
So maybe.
So really it's about.
Communicating the procedures is what we have to do because right now there's two buildings that can accommodate. And as we go along, there'll be more buildings that can accommodate.
I, I think this is, you know, in the email thread, I think if I was going to make a suggestion here, it's, do you, does the board want to consider adopting a hybrid meeting format for boards and committees? And I think the, the current policy, if you will, is the, the committee chairs, you know, schedule the meetings and, and pick basically one of like three options really for meeting formats. And so we've let the committee chairs have the discretion to choose the format because I think if it was a real, if Zoom didn't exist, the committee chair would get to choose, you know, would have some discretion how the meeting gets set up, how the room gets set up, things like that. And so if the, if the board has a goal of wanting to have it be standardized across all boards and committees, that would be the goal, that would be the goal-setting item. But if it, the board does not have an interest in doing that, then it would continue to be, then I would say the goal is to support boards and committees in creating and sustaining hybrid meeting models or something like that.
Right.
I think the guy, I think the idea is we want to continue to offer hybrid, hybrid meeting models.
Right, and we want to inform the other committees what all their options are and which rooms they can meet in. And this is going to evolve all year, right? So, um,
Like virtual there, Matt, maybe.
It's more a communication issue, I think, than an adopting policy issue. So it maybe should say something like communicate, ongoing.
But, I mean, do we need a policy?
Well.
Hybrid meeting policy.
I don't think that we do.
No, so we're working, we're, we're, we developed a meeting policy for, at the beginning of the pandemic. And we're in the process of updating that. It got, it, it became out of date for a lot of things. But I mean, some of the stuff that's in it, like turn your video on, identify yourself, like all those things will, will, are still in there. So that part's good. But it's more, you know, Chris has prepared a, a document that has all of our meeting rooms with what the options are and things like that. So I think it's going to be a little more robust and he's in the process of updating it now.
Well, if we want to have a policy, we could have a policy that it doesn't have to be a goal. We have one.
Right, exactly. It's, but we do have to keep, about, um, keep all committees up to date on evolving hybrid and, and, and meeting models.
We don't even have to do that. I mean, if we adopt a policy that we want people to follow, I think it'd be a good, a good idea to tell them what it is.
Yeah. All right.
And.
I think also remember the, um, hybrid and Zoom models we're on now are going to expire in April, so it's going to evolve again. So, this is going to be ongoing all year. Yeah, hybrid meeting best practices, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Keep town boards in any surprise of hybrid meeting best practices while supporting continued virtual Zoom meeting option. Good. Everybody like that? Okay? Good. Thank you, Matt. That's a good one. Okay, number four.
I think that this is a town manager goal.
Oh, I disagree. I really think that what we want to do with number four, I don't know who put this in, it wasn't me. But I love this one. What I want to do with this one is, we've heard so much from citizens. They like hybrid, they, you know, they like this, they don't like that. I think we should take the customer service lessons that we've learned and work with the town manager to improve our, you know, improve, you know, suggest new directions.
I think how I would suggest that is relay citizen, you know, information from your constituents. If you hear things from constituents about things that people like, I think we should, you know, have a discussion about that. And then we can go back and say, what operational things do we need to change to meet the wishes or the, um, the desire changes. I mean, I think we've done a lot of that already, but I do think it's important to have a goal of relay the information to us so we can figure out how best to, to accommodate.
Okay. You know what? Just cross off all that after in, no. Suggest, start with suggested new directions. Yeah, no.
What?
Okay. Adjusting, let's see, relay citizen concerns and interests in, start crossing out from adjusting.
Okay. Two.
Learned and, yeah, cross off all that, see if that works.
Uh, I would say we need to say new town practices going forward instead of directions.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, because it could be very broad, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Number five is really good. The ARPA funds, definitely want to do that. Vacancies, we might want to take a look at that. Yep. Receive a first and second quarter update on the new post-pandemic plan.
So isn't that similar to this?
Yes.
Number two.
Number two and seven could be combined. That's really good.
So just cut number seven?
Or cut number two maybe then.
Well, what do you think?
You're, you're on seven. You might as well cut it while you're there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we only have one more section.
Can we go back to that vacancies thing?
So for number two, could we reference an ongoing efforts to reopen town facilities and functionality of new.
Yeah, and the.
New office hours?
And the effectiveness.
New public office hours.
The effectiveness of revised office hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Open office hours. Okay.
Okay, anybody else on this section? Great.
What's the intent of number six?
Number six. Who put in number six? Nobody wants to admit. I don't remember who put it in.
I think there, um, you know, during the budget process, I think there was reference to a number of vacancies that were not filled. And then there were some, um, of a comments about why so many positions had not been filled. And so, um, I think, and then we've also talked about, you know, some of the pressures and stress on our, our individual departments. So I, I, I think it's coming from a combination of those things.
Makes sense.
Okay.
All right, we only have to go back to this one section we skipped. And we're doing really well with this, so. Okay, now this right now, it has sixteen.
We got rid of the broadband, right?
We got rid of thirteen and fourteen, which were.
But we also moved the broadband, did we?
That was thirteen.
Oh, no, seat, seat, no, the, okay, charge for a seat of the committee.
Right. All right, what I want to do with this one is, we're going to look at the whole thing, but I have a suggestion that we're going to split it into two. And Matt, I don't think you have to do that now. It might be too hard. But what we could do is split this into one group that the select board is directly going to do. And the other group that we're going to, um, you know, direct the town manager and he, to do, that he's going to be doing it, but we have the policy oversight.
Or maybe just change it into one goal.
What do you mean?
Well, one goal is basically direct the town managers.
Oh, you mean and then ABC.
ABC.
Yeah, maybe we could do that. Okay, so, well, not, okay, well, all right. So number one, I think is something the select board has to do. Number two, um, this is the one about envision conquered.
We already discussed it.
We pretty much discussed this one.
Although C, I don't know, do we?
I think we could take out C.
I do too. Implementation of any additional goals, it's sort of like, and et cetera.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
So I know you're trying to shorten this. In this section, I added a new C, I guess. In the near term, be informed about the department's current year goals. And again, you know, that has to do with the, um, philosophy about the being informed by and in, and also informing, you know, the interaction between.
Okay, so this item is about envision conquered.
I mean, isn't that what B is saying?
Well, wait a second. Hold on. Okay, this section's about envision conquered. So Linda, is your comment about the department's goals for envision conquered in the near term?
Yeah, because basically most of them are, are coming from.
Okay.
Envision conquered.
Okay.
Occasionally, there's some additional ones that have been added, but.
So I think if you said identify departmental goals and review progress.
Yeah, that would be easy.
Okay.
So the thing with the vision conquered is there are, I think, I have my copy with you, but there, I think there are some action items that are not, that are more community-based versus town operation, like town organization-based. And so I just want to make sure that we clarify that there's things that are within our wheelhouse.
How about that?
Okay, so Linda, does part B, the way it's written down.
That's great. Okay.
All right, number three, we have to do this one, the Fiber Broadband Completion Committee. Number four, we have to do the Personnel Study Committee. Okay, number five.
Delayed shouldn't be there.
Right, I.
I don't understand what this is.
We cut it. We meant to cut it.
Well, this is something, is this the same one again?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with cutting that one then? Good. Okay, number five, finish seating and operationalize Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Last I knew, we had everyone appointed except for one. We need one more seat on it, I think.
Is there anything more for us to do?
Well, we might, I don't know. What's, what is the status of this?
I mean, we appoint members on an ongoing basis too.
Right, but there's one more person has to be appointed. Is that right, Jeremy, or?
Which committee is this part?
Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I can, I can pull up. I know we have, I think we have four people appointed.
They could, they could meet.
They could meet, yeah.
What is operationalize?
That's right. I don't know what that means.
Whoever wrote that, what do you mean?
I, I suggest cutting them.
Well, we want, it's a big priority.
We did create the trust last year, we.
I think it's as simple as, you know, it's really just like an update on Junction Village would cover the intent of the item. I think just having Terry just reach out to a member of the committee and call, and encourage them to schedule a meeting.
Well, if it's that, he's even more than a need a goal.
All right, there are a lot of committees that have vacancies for which appointments are needed.
Yeah, so this is a brand-new committee. This is like a different, we're going to, we're going to get to the other committees.
I mean, it's, and that's just part of, that's just part of the, part of the job.
We're getting, we're getting ribbon. Okay. Now.
Provide guidance and resources for town volunteers serving on boards and committees. Oh, and I added restart annual training session for board committee members. We used to have before COVID, an annual session that the town clerk would run.
Or biannual maybe?
Well, it's time to do it again this year for sure.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping, Stephen, that you and Kari can put this together like in the fall, I'm hoping that'd be a good time to do it. So.
Yeah, because you want, you, you know, every time you go, you learn.
Well, plus a lot of new people.
There's a lot of new people, right, but even existing committee members benefit.
Yep.
I, I have a question about the next one, which is whether that could be consolidated with the one we talked about with hybrid and Zoom meetings and that we can also just add to it and the enhanced use of technology increases through the use of enhanced technology. In other words, if we.
This one is about promoting MMN and the PEG Access Group and, I think.
Okay, what are we going to do?
So Matt, you were suggesting that go where?
I was going to just take the highlighted phrase and add it to the one that we had below about the implement the post-COVID, which is about implementing the keep town boards meetings comprised of hybrid meeting best practices while supporting continued virtual Zoom meeting option and enhanced use of technology and public shoulders and access. I don't know, but I just, it's a seem related to me, maybe, you know.
We're getting a message on our screen, auto power off.
That's not on my screen.
Does that mark the remote maybe for the TV?
It's on the monitor.
Yeah, it's, it's thinking where.
It's got to press that kind of.
Getting tired.
Thank you.
Boy, was that fitting timing or what? Just talking about technology.
It automatically produces a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
We're almost there, guys.
I'm okay with leaving it. I'm okay with leaving it, I, you consider it distinct and that's all right, it certainly, the phrasing would have been awkward, so.
All right, citizen correspondence policy. I know, who wants to work on this? I think we'll talk about the set of future meeting, maybe we could have one or two volunteers on our board work on this. Figure this out. Okay. Recruit new members, yep. Okay, number nine, we are going to be having.
Terry, number eight, you've got chair's input there.
Oh.
Yeah.
You, I assume you haven't gotten the chair's input to the community volunteer, you were going to bring that up at the chair's breakfast or something?
Yeah, we did, and I don't think feedback came in, so.
So, good point, so what do we do now? All right, fine. Number nine, that will be a focus meeting, we need to work on APB 10, we need to consolidate.
Oh, I wanted to mention the ensure that all volunteers are acknowledged for their willingness to serve is part of the committee volunteer process. So in other words, if we implement it, we will have done that. See what I mean? You don't need to, this is just one element.
Well, some of, some of the committee volunteer process has been implemented. That's the problem. So how about maybe to take, finish implementing, including this acknowledgement thing or something.
So we have the subcommittee last fall.
Right.
And we, we came up with a process which we've been, which we did implement after. And for the acknowledgement, board committee members do get a, an email when they submit a green card. So they already do acknowledge.
Have you tested it though?
Yes, yeah, you do, you do get a.
Right, but is, say town of Concord, like, it looks like spam?
It's the one from Civic.
Yeah, I think we need to do some work on that.
Okay, well, we can, we can change the, we could, we could change what it says, but if we, they do get, sorry, a acknowledgement currently.
Right, right. Okay.
So we have to keep.
Yeah, a lot of the volunteers have commented that they did not get the acknowledgement because it went in their spam, it does the same town of Concord and it needs a little work, okay. Number 10, the public private partnership agreements.
Do we need this?
So we had part one of the town manager's review of agreements and he said he would get back to us for the second part.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would take, strike the second part.
Strike the second part?
Or change, or change the action words.
What is it?
I would say change the, I mean, we'll complete the, the review. Or maybe just review agreements.
Okay.
Receive, yeah, yeah, whatever.
Okay, sorry. Town managers, what, public partnership update?
Yeah, update.
Update, okay.
Okay.
Okay, number 11 is out, we did that one.
Yeah.
Improve the functionality of the website.
We can't do that.
Suggest things to the town manager about it, or give input or anything. I think it's an important thing that citizens have concerns about, related concerns, suggestions or, or something. What do you, how do you guys want to proceed? What do you, what would help you from the select board to make some changes to the website? What would help?
I mean, it's a platform that's created by others, Civic.
Right.
Civic Plus, and they do like everybody's websites. And so some of the, some of the issue is, and has been, some of the complaints are just inherent to the architecture of the Civic Plus format. And so while I want to, I've tried to, you know, convey workarounds or different strategies for searching and things like that, ultimately, we don't really have the ability to change the proprietary, you know, website. And, and, you know, like, if you go to any town around us, most of them are Civic Plus, and so.
But the other complaints, there are some that we can address, and those are the ones, oh, the search engine doesn't work well, we can't fix that. That's a platform problem, but we have some other issues, like what page certain things are on, or updating things, or whatever suggestions that we have.
Or putting resources and putting information about particular subjects all together.
Yeah.
So that you can just, you know, get all the information about, say, you know, the Milker Metal site, or something like that. And, or you can get the information on the Estherbrook lawsuit, you know, copies of the the papers that have been filed with court and so on, so that whatever the subject, you can go and do, find materials by subject matter without having to use, having to use the search engine. Because if you go to, there's just a link.
Right.
To a subject, then you can have the, have all the material together.
Right, so I agree with Matt, advise the town manager on opportunities to improve the functionality of the website.
I was going to say, improve the organization and access to information.
Okay, right, and sometimes, Stephen, you guys are going to come back and say, if you want that, we have to get a whole new platform, it doesn't exist, and sometimes you're going to come back and say, good idea, we can do it. And so our job is to take the citizen comments and try to make suggestions to you to improve it.
Well, it's something we've talked about here, which is, it's almost impossible to find the charges for the committees on the website.
Right, so let's put them all in one place, right.
Or put them on either all together in one place, or put the charge for each committee on the portion of the website that has the information about the committee.
Well, I think that's probably already there for most of them, no? Okay, well, we don't want to get into the detail of that now.
The point is, there is a lot of information that could be made more easily accessible, not only to the public, but to us.
Right, absolutely.
I had a problem, for example, knowing when terms ended, and some, some of the committees have clarity on terms for the members, but others don't.
I have to go to the town report to find that stuff.
Okay, all right, good, so this is a goal for us to advise the town manager for these opportunities. Okay, and number 12, work with town manager and office staff to improve process of preparation for select board meetings. Okay, so. I think we have done Yeom's work on this, it was not finished yet, but I think that we've come a long way. And what I'd like to do now is have in our packet next week, a draft that we'll all look at, and then when we come to the meeting next week, we can correct formatting if we have to or whatever, and hopefully adopt it. So in order to get to that point.
And are you still hoping that we'll find a way to put the first section in two?
Well, I don't know, I think we've narrowed it down enough.
Now it's short now, by the way, we now have 49 goals.
So we got to 20.
From 67 to 40.
I thought you said 69.
Yeah, we went from 69 to 40, oh, sorry, 69 to 40.
Got rid of 20, pretty good. Okay, well, what I'd like to know, Matt, is you have the document there. What's the easiest for you? Do you want to turn it over to Jeremy to do like your grammar checks, spell check formatting stuff or?
He can, but spell check's on, so.
Okay. So you're saying it's ready to go out the way it is?
I think it's ready to go out.
Great, okay, good.
Maybe change the date.
Change the date, yeah.
Excellent. So I'd like to, we have a very long meeting next time, I would like to avoid spending two and a half hours on it again, we've done the work tonight. We hopefully will just be able to finalize and adopt it.
Okay, and I will send out two versions, one version will be the markup version, but just to show you what that looks like. Well, that, that's clear, but then you start to get down here and it starts to get.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll send out the markup version and we'll also send out a clean version.
Wonderful, and do not replay all, no deliberation on email, everybody knows that.
Should I just simply cut these comments? I've got your comments.
Yeah, you can cut my comments, we already talked about them, how can the board help and splitting into two parts and all that.
All comments.
Okay. All right, excellent, great, okay, now we are on to.
I'm sending this to Jeremy.
Okay, good, we are on to committee nominations.
Oh.
I think there's supposed to be a motion coming.
Yes, there's supposed to be a motion, thank you. Move to nominate, oh, we don't need a motion for nomination.
Oh, we don't need a motion for nominations, thank you.
We only need a motion for appointment.
That's right, okay, so the next thing is public comments.
Although there is one additional nomination I should note, that's Amy Kaiser of 289 Commonwealth Avenue to the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term ending April 30th, what, 2023?
2024.
2024. So please add that to the list of nominations.
All right.
She's renominated, it's a second term.
I think you still have to read them, right?
Okay, well, I can just read them, so Amy Kaiser, 289 Commonwealth Avenue to West Concord Advisory Committee for a term ending April 30th, 2024. Then Robert Abraham of 81 Plainfield Road to the Hugh Cargill Trust for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. Sharon Jones of 8 Eaton Street, Bob Shatton of 116 Indian Spring Road and Karen Gibson of 11641 Main Street to the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee for terms to expire in April 30th, 2024. Ira Goldman of 130 Monson Road to the Massport Community Advisory Committee for a term to advise, end on April 30th, 2024. And Happy Gothard of 606 Old Bedford Road and Melissa Maxwell of 449 Barrettsville Road to the Agriculture Committee for terms to expire. Can you guess? April 30th, 2024.
24 to 26 here.
That's right, but that was a typo. All right, thank you very much. And now we will have public comment. If you are attending tonight by Zoom, please select participants box, then hover your mouse over your name and wait for the prompt, raise your hand, and then Jeremy or I will call on you.
So we have Pamela Drit, I want if you'd like to maybe some?
Hi, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4, thank you very much. You guys are wonderful and inspiring. I'm concerned by goals that are only money amounts, like keeping the middle school budget under $100 million and don't include our sustainability and, and climate resilience responsibilities too. And I'm also concerned about the big picture issues that cross over town committees, like the light board, the select board, and the school committee, specific climate change stuff are. And like investing in building net zero and all electric town infrastructure, transitioning town vehicles like police cars, school buses, fire engines, trucks, et cetera, to electric vehicles and reducing fossil fuel infrastructure investments, because weather emergencies are expensive. How can we protect Concord from climate change caused extreme weather events if we don't build up our town green infrastructure? Lowering expenses and taxes is important, but not our only goal. For example, incorporating the solar and energy storage into the new middle school means we can use it as a public refuge in emergencies like power outages. It also increases the strength, resiliency, and sustainability of the town's electric infrastructure and helps us deal with the current climate crisis. That's extremely important for our town and really has little interest for the school board and their budget making. Is that being considered enough when planning town investments like new schools? Where are the significant savings in building operating expenses for that kind of building listed? Shouldn't that be considered in the building cost budget, at least as offsets? In the same way, our town investment in underground utilities and fiber optic broadband infrastructure has the possibility to pay off big time financially for the town in the future, especially if we have lots of local solar generation and storage. That means the light plant doesn't get as much revenue from selling electricity they buy on the open market. Also, universal fiber optic broadband could eliminate the safety concerns for 5G and smart meters and allow us to create a smart grid and a really good business friendly town. Please, I think you are the, are the board that is supposed to look at these really broad overarching, big picture issues, and I'm not sure. I, I would like to see it more in the, the process that you did tonight. Although there was great stuff in there, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, Pamela. I should have asked also, before we do the next Zoom comment, are there comments from the people attending here? Okay, I saw your hand raised before, okay, sure, come up to the microphone.
Just very appreciate, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road, I just want to say, I'm really amazed and appreciative of this great work here, and I'm very happy to be able to be here in the room with you guys.
Thank you for coming. Okay, other people on Zoom. By the way, how many people do we have?
By the way, he can come again.
Yes. Good idea.
We have 10 people on Zoom right now.
Okay. Oh, boy, all right, okay, all right, are there any other public comments?
One more, I think the, the group of initials that you eliminated was the Boston Regional School Board, like Minuteman.
Thank you, okay. All right, see no other public comments?
We have a separate Adam for Minuteman specifically.
Yeah, we have Minuteman, right, okay. Then I'll entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.